All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting order. Um, the zoning commission for today's date, August 5th, uh, is now in session. And we'll take a roll call. We have a new commissioners, let's go over the whole roll call.
This is time. We have Juan Solis.
Present.
Charles Jackson. Carlos Mojica.
Present.
Christian. Benno. Okay. Okay, and Maricela.
Right.
Okay.
This gives us a core.
And I don't know who's absent. Who's your?
That's it? That's it.
Okay. Everybody's present.
So, um, I'm sure you've had an opportunity. Um, but first, before we get to the minutes, are there anybody's? I have people signed dip, but I, I suppose it's good to be for the actual item. Uh, and there are other people that are present. If you're willing to speak, we have a citizen to be heard first. That could be open and you can speak about whatever you'd like to. But as we get the agenda, we'll also have a public hearing at that point for the actual, uh, short-term rentals. And unless somebody else has signed in. We'll go from there. I, I only have two people, Catherine and Jack Joyce on my list. And they're going to be for the short-term rentals. So seeing none, then we'll go ahead straight out of this no citizens comment. It is six thirty-three, five, according to the clock back there. Uh, and we'll move for the approval of the agenda for the consent agenda with the minutes of June 3rd, the 2025 zoning commission, I don't need a motion. Second. Have a motion in the second. Jackson, you know, Chea. All those in favor, oh, there any other discussion, 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 seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, first thing done. Uh, our first issue is an SUP, it's four point one, a public hearing on a request from Florencia Ramos for an SUP on 5505 Blanco Road, Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two one six. More particularly described, the city block five zero zero eight H, block lot twenty and twenty-one and nineteen. Uh, executive E R R sixteen point eight feet, as found in the real property records of Bear County, Texas, to notify the zoning of the location to allow for the use of property to permit and provide permanent makeup services. And so it's a public hearing, the public hearing is open. So if anybody wants to speak in that reference to that item, please come forward. Is there anybody online? I don't have a picture here on my thing, show me what's going on. Sir?
For the record, we just state the time the public hearing opened, and if there's no one to speak, you can close it and announce the time.
Six thirty-six at the time of the opening, thank you very much. Louis, I don't have my camera. You have yours. There's nobody up? Okay, so seeing no one respond to the, um, the. I need to, I can't see it without seeing it, how am I going to respond? They unplugged me. Would that one person like to speak? In reference to the four point one, the public hearing or request by Florencia Ramos for an SUP at fifty-five oh five Blanco Road? Seeing those speakers, then at six thirty-nine PM, according to our clock back there, we will close the public hearing. And at this point, we'll go to a discussion of possible action, that's four point two. Discussion of possible action on resolution number two zero two five dash oh eight dash oh five on a request from the Florencia Ramos for an SUP at fifty-five oh five Blanco Road, Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two one six. More particularly described as city black, city block five zero zero eight H, block lot twenty, twenty-one and nineteen. Executive E R R sixteen point eight feet, as found in the real property records of Bear County, to modify the zoning of the location to allow for the use of the property to provide permanent makeup services. It's a pretty routine. It's my understanding there was an issue whether they had the previous owner or they haven't updated the, the owner's request, I mean, permission for them to have that. Has that been signed?
No, sir. I reached out to the applicant and asked her that she needed to show up. She was waffling back and forth between asking this board for this permission or perhaps postponing it until next meeting. She was advised that she needed to have an updated owner affidavit to begin with. And then she was also told, a message was sent to her that she needed to show up to this meeting if she was going to ask for postponement. And she never reached out.
Okay, so commissioners, please understand, when they're asking for this, we asked for an up-to-dated vow, uh, vow affidavit from the property owner that they are authorizing them to do this. The one that had done it was previously with the private year before. So therefore, in this new application, she was asked to get an updated one of the present owner because the owner has changed. That did not take place. Um, so it's up to us, I, I don't have a problem postponing it, you know, it's, it's a no-brainer. So I'll look for a motion to postpone. And a second.
Second.
Jackson move, postpone moment, second with Mojica. Um, no discussion, no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, moves on. All right, so now we have a, a public hearing on possible amendments to chapter fifty, article five of the zoning ordinance concerning short-term rentals. The public helping, uh, opening is open at six forty-one, according to the clock in the back. We are now here to hear from citizens to be heard. The first one is Catherine Joyce. Items four point three. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Catherine Joyce, I live at one oh eight Sir Arthur Court, and my husband and I have lived there for twenty-two years. I'd like to thank this committee for taking the time to investigate short-term rentals in Castle Hills. And thank you for the moratorium on additional STRs in our city at present. I would like to urge you to consider making the moratorium permanent. So there are no new STRs in our city and to create stricter ordinances and checks and balances for the existing ones. Our local owners do a great job with their properties and they are an asset to the city. The problem properties are the ones owned by large corporations with owners that live out of state. The property at one oh seven Wickford Way, which is immediately behind our backyard, has not altered the way they conduct business despite repeated complaints from area residents, code compliance visits and letters to the owner. They were removed from Airbnb due to the problems, but they remain on VRBO. They recently parked four cars on the street overnight. After numerous neighbors called it in, our wonderful police force issued a warning, but no ticket, so they parked there for three continuous nights without penalty. I hate to think our officers are devoting their time to these issues when there are far more important things they should be focused on. Trash management continues to be a problem as well, despite warnings from code compliance. I listened when interim city manager Gilbert suggested we look at Hollywood Park as an example for how to navigate these waters. I'd like to read a brief summary, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the town of, uh, Hollywood Park initially addressed concerns about short-term rentals through code compliance and nuisance rules. However, in response to growing worries from residents about public safety, property values, and maintaining the residential character of the community, Hollywood Park City Council unanimously, unanimously approved an ordinance to ban STRs on November fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. I suggest a stop to new properties rather than a ban to all to avoid legal issues. Hollywood Park established specific rules for their grandfathered rentals, including a minimum lease duration of two consecutive overnight periods and three consecutive days. Occupancy limits, no more than two adult tenants per bedroom. And tenant rules, no more than three non-tenants between ten PM and six AM. And something we didn't even think of, and no camping or parking of RVs on the property. It did lead to legal, legal action because they banned them outright. But they reached a settlement with the plaintiffs and said that they would grandfather them in. They gave them six months to comply to all the ordinances. They charged them two thousand dollars a day if they did not comply. And they settled it, uh, as of January, I believe of this year. So I think we should maybe be a little less aggressive, but I think that, uh, we all recognize these properties have got a mind of their own. And with all of our large houses with big lots and pools, they're just ripe for more people to take them on. And it's not the locals that are a problem. And many locals have come and spoken at your meetings, it's the corporations that don't care. They're just a number. And, uh, let me tell you, it is no fun living next to the one behind us. It really isn't, and nothing has changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and I will remind, uh, the audience, this is our third public hearing for STRs. Before I call up Jack, I'm going to request that, uh, someone get us the printed minutes. They're going to be essential when we move to the next part of the meeting. Uh, so if somebody can go print out for all of us the minutes from last session, uh, because it addresses, and when we do the comparison with information at the beginning, you need to know what was said and approved, uh, and asked for in the minute. So if, while Jack comes up and whoever wants to speak. So the minutes that were emailed to all of us, one for each of the commissioners up here. Yes. And so that's all coming, and I want to make sure that we look at what this, because the minutes represent what the committee, what the citizens brought up and how we, and then when you look at the new ones, you're going to be able to see, oh, that's what we addressed. So a lot of what was brought up just recently is going to be essential. So to me, I always envisioned us looking at both and saying, okay, here was a concern, and then here's a recommendation. So we'll go from there. Uh, Jack Joyce, next, please. Councilman, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, staff. Uh, Jack Joyce, one zero eight Sir Arthur, uh, thank you so much for allowing us to speak. And first, I'd like to say a couple of thank yous. Uh, Mr. Duque passed on to us the ordinance that the staff had worked on with Mr. Schnau, and I'd like to say thank you. Uh, because you guys listened. Uh, it's, it's good that you're going to review what was said last week because many suggestions were made, and many of them made into the draft ordinance, so thank you for that. I'd also like to thank the code compliance guys, uh, Louis and, uh, and Ron, who goes out and does most of the looking at these things and taking photographs and everything. And also the police department, as Catherine mentioned, they work really hard. And it's tough for them to take on these things that, you know, there's no lives endangered or anything like that. So it's, we appreciate what they do. But, uh, nevertheless, that SDR behind us is still a problem. You know, we're, we're five months into this now, recognizing we're going to redo the ordinance. But Ron has been out there many, many times, the police have been out there many, many times with noise complaints. And they're still at it. And so, you know, as I look forward to our strengthening this ordinance, I think that's a wonderful thing. But I, it makes me wonder if we're going to be able to enforce it. Because frankly, despite the best efforts of staff and PD, it's the same. Just this past weekend, I was away, but Catherine was telling me that there was another group there making noise, you know, all night long. And they also, you know, it's summertime, so the, the kids are in the pool all afternoon, and I have my office right up there, and it's, you know, they're yelling and screaming and stuff, I mean, kids enjoy pools, but every day. Um, so anyway, you know, and we have numerous complaints, not just Catherine and me. Numerous, uh, citations. And, and here we are. I read in, uh, Mr. Duque was nice enough to, to pass along to me the, um, staff's list of what's happened at this property and other properties since they were in existence in March. And I was surprised to see that they were declared, I believe it was in April, a nuisance generating property. And that's a pretty big deal. It, I think it resulted, it was a result of.
Is that the one that was behind your house?
Yes. Three violations.
What's the address again?
One zero seven Wickford Way. And that's a pretty big deal. And Louis described to me what it means that, you know, they lose their deposit and they have to put another deposit up. So I wonder if that has really happened and they don't, because nothing's changed. So my point is, um, to make a short story long here. I agree with Catherine, I don't think that it's going to matter what we do to the ordinance. I hate to be a pessimist because I'm an optimist. I think the best way to do it is just say, no more. Cap it where we are. You know, it's, it's very dangerous legally, of course, to go back and try to take away those investments of those people. And, um, cap it where we are and then be very strict at the renewals. At renewal time, which I understand is a year. I think we should be, look at all of these violations, and I think we should look at the complaints too. Because, you know, I know there's a legal standard and a complaint doesn't rise to the level, the legal standard of a violation. Complaint simply doesn't in it on its own. But in my opinion, every complaint means a degradation of our quality of life here in Castle Hills. Because it's a screaming kid or some knuckleheads partying after the final four at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock at night. And the neighborhood is not the same. And that's really bad. And so, you know, I, I applaud the, the commission for trying very hard to come up with some better ideas, the stricter ideas. But I think the best thing to do, folks, is just cap it where we are right now. And yes, put in all these, these, uh, more stringent restrictions for those that are in place. But then really tighten up at renewal time. Catherine mentioned a couple of things that folks at Hollywood Park do. And I think we should do those things and more. I think, I think citizens should have a say in whether or not a renewal happens with one of these things. Um, I think you could guess the way we would vote if we had a voice with this group. But in any event, I, I think I've said my piece, thank you for listening, and, uh, you, you have my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And we'll make sure that we remind you, um, anybody who's here, the zoning commission provides recommendations to the city council. So it's our best recommendations and the actual body that will be able to adopt the final recommendations is the city council. So while we can do the best we can, we provide our best advice, uh, in accordance with our attorney, and we move it forward to them at city council who makes the ultimate decision as to what the new rules will be for short-term rentals in the city of Castle Hills. I still see some other people, is there anybody else out there would like to speak? Please come forward, yes.
Got somebody on Zoom.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Your name, address, and your comments, sir.
Sorry, my name is Svenak Schubel, yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I represent the House on one thirteen Wickford Way. And so I send an email, but I will read it. Uh, so when the city of, the city of Castle Hills approved SDRs, the council members clearly thought it to be beneficial to the community. So my question is, what has changed? I hear Mr. Joyce's comments. Uh, my wife and I own one thirteen Wickford Way, not a large corporation. We own another SDR property in a residential neighborhood in Colorado. And have never had any complaints from our neighbors. Given the non-adherence to SDR rules, I understand that Mr. Joyce is upset with one oh seven Bigfoot Way. I would as well. I do not, as a matter of fact, I support strict regulations for SDRs. However, without ever having caused any trouble, Mr. Joyce targeted our house from ever having a chance to function as an SDR. If Castle.
You speak up a little bit louder, and I apologize, just to get a little louder.
Yeah, so we have never caused, uh, any trouble to Mr. Joyce or the city of Castle Hills. But we were targeted and never had a chance to have our house function as an SDR and improve the neighborhood of Castle Hills. If Castle Hill citizens have concerns about particular SDRs, then these SDRs should be targeted and have their permits withdrawn. This is what happens in other cities. I have no problem with strict regulations. We face this in our current SDR community. And we can, I can tell you, it is important that the owners of the SDRs screen their guests and appropriately allow them to stay or not. And if there are complaints, then this needs to be addressed by the owners immediately. I agree with that as well. But flat-out, uh, flat-out, uh, prohibiting SDRs. Is that really the solution we're looking for? I mean, there has been a reason why this was initially approved. There have to be benefits to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Is there anybody else, actually another person there, would you like to speak also? Thank you for observing, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak? Basically, he, uh, what I understood was that he owns one thirteen, he felt he was targeted. He's willing to look at the, at the, at the restrictions that are available, he thinks they're good. Um, but, you know, having not had that opportunity, obviously, he's not happy with what we've been able to do. Was that correct? Close enough?
That's, that's, that's correct, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Yes, sir, anybody else, I see people in the audience, anybody else want to speak? Seeing none, then the public hearing is closed at six fifty-five PM. And we'll go on to the next thing, which is a discussion. Uh, a discussion of possible action on amendments to chapter fifteen, article five of the zoning commission concerning short-term rentals. At this point, we'll have our city attorney come up and provide us with the recommendations that he's been able to work out, and we will be able to do the comparison, as I talked about, of what he is looking at and what the recommendations, remember, and I want to go back to this your minutes. And I, there were several things that were noted here that I thought are significant, right? So I asked the city attorney to return with the maximum allow STR, STR regulations under the law and the current status of the rules of the next, for the next zoning commission. I also asked him, um, to make sure that we also, um, were looking at everything that was taking place with the present ones. And we also asked the city attorney to be able to come back with us with the recommendations that he felt that we could be able to pass forward to the city council for their consideration. Uh, we also talked about the legality of capping STRs, we had some suggestions on that and some conversations under the new, which is what you have here in front of you. You will notice that the red indicates the changes that we're looking at. So, Mr. City Attorney, let's go step by step, uh, and welcome to the meeting, sir.
For this purpose, despite my travel plans, I will remove my mask.
Thank, um, yeah, I know, you're leaving soon.
So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and, um, and I, I thank the commission for its indulgence. Um, what I had suggested to Mr. Solis and Mr. Duque was to help the commission focus on specifics rather than generalities, to, uh, look at and consider the consensus of comments that the commission had heard on the prior two public hearings that you held, and also what the city council had heard at at least one and maybe two meetings itself. Um, that members of the commission may not have been privy to, a lot of it was very consistent. What I tried to do is, is in the red line, uh, put together, um, what seems to me, uh, to be the, uh, strongest language we could um, adopt without running afoul of state law. Um, trying to stay out of the courthouse if we can. Um, as the chairman said, you are a recommending body, you're an advising body. What you send to the city council gets a thorough review by the city council. Um, even if we come out of this meeting this evening with you all, um, wanting to go forward with this recommendation or this recommendation has changed during this meeting, it still goes to city council with a public hearing. Um, and due to the restraints of notice under the local government code and our local ordinance, um, that public hearing would be on September eleventh. Um, and, and there could be a subsequent, um, public hearing at a subsequent council meeting if the council determined to go that way. So, I, I, I tried to create some consistency here. Um, and I really tried to, um, focus on the items that were repeated, not just by one or two people, but by more than that, uh, the concepts that they brought to the attention of the commission. Some of the changes are really minor. Um, the first one you'll see is in the definition of guest. Uh, it, instead of saying short-term rental unit, it says short-term rental property. And we changed the definition below to be of short-term rental property. Um, but the first material change is to expand the definition of what is a short-term rental. Comments were made about using the swimming pool. Um, renting your swimming pool, renting a tennis court, renting a sport court, a pickleball, a pickleball ball court, or just renting your backyard. There are case examples of those in other cities in Texas. And I felt it was an appropriate suggestion to broaden the definition of short-term rental to include not just the single-family dwelling, multiple-family attached-up dwelling, et cetera, but also to include, um, property on which a dwelling is located, including without limitation, a swimming pool, tennis court, sport court, pickleball court, backyard or gazebo. A credit to Mr. Zamaron for asking me to add sport court to that list. Um, so that is the first item, uh, broadening the definition to reach more activities, which, which are outdoor activities, which are, are the primary focus of what we've heard, not the sole focus by any means, but it's the outdoor activities that create noise at the wrong time of day or night that, that have generated the most specific complaints that the commission has heard. The next paragraph, there was a change, um, in the exempt items. Um, Mr. Duque suggested that, uh, there was no reason to exempt uh, property owned by a governmental agency and used to house its employees or for governmental purposes. So that definition or that exemption from the definition from short-term rental um, is dropped, that's the line, the cross-out if, in that second paragraph under short-term rental. Um, in the next, um, definition, our, uh, our clerk uh, reviewed this, uh, draft, the prior draft at Mr. Duque's recommendation and reminded us all, I didn't know this until I got his email about it, that we don't issue short-term rental permits. We issue short-term rental certificates of obligation. So there are probably ten or fifteen changes in here, which just changed the phrase, short-term rental permit.
For the record, it's certificate of occupancy, not obligation.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Obligation, you're, that's another.
That's a mother, another half that I, yeah, it would be nice if they had to get a certificate of obligation. Um, yeah, yeah, certificate of occupancy, I apologize for the misspoke. Um, so you'll see several places where the word permit is changed to certificate of occupancy, that's just to reflect what the city has been issuing all along. And then at the bottom of the first page, again, short-term rental unit um, is defined a little differently as short-term rental property. Um, again, for consistent. Uh, section five point one eight at the top of the next page. Um, the red line change again is certificate of occupancy as opposed to permit. Um, same in the caption to fifty dash five nineteen. Um, and in the first sentence, um, prior to renting a real property for a short-term, short-term rental, an applicant shall submit an application for a short-term rental certificate of occupa, uh, occupancy, uh, using the format and method promulgated by the city, and then delineating the, um, minimum that the application needs to include. Um, we don't think we need the name of a short-term rental, most of them don't have names or use the street address as the name, that didn't seem necessary. Um, we still require the diagram showing the layout of the property. Um, but it didn't seem necessary to say with meets and bounds, which is a survey-type description. Um, most of the property. Uh, most of the property, virtually all of the property in the city of Castle Hills has been platted so that there's a plat, which ordinarily would have a lot and block number, so wouldn't have meets and bounds legal description. Um, we do continue to require a deed, but for clarification, it's a copy of the deed to the short-term rental property. This isn't a, a way for the city to, um, more clearly identify who the owner is. We heard some comments, um, during the citizen, uh, comment about owner of the short-term rental property. So we want to see a deed to that property so we know who the owner, record owner is. Um, and, um, uh, those are the changes in sub-A. Uh, there'll be a, a certificate of occupancy fee rather than a permit fee. Uh, and you'll see in, in paragraphs B and C, um, and D, again, most of these changes are simply the, the language change to replace permit with certificate of occupancy, um, and to make it clear that these are short-term rental property as opposed to short-term rental units. Um, and, and similarly, um, most of the changes here on the remainder of page two are of that same, um, uh, type. The last change is a little different. In paragraph H, our ordinance currently says that the total number of short-term rental properties in the A, single-family district and the B duplex dis-, du-, B duplex district is limited to no more than 1/12 of the total number of single-family and duplex units on a single street. An application for a short-term rental permit will be denied if granting the permit would violate this provision. Um, we heard comments about proximity during several of our, uh, our public hearings on short-term rentals. The changes in paragraph H changed the word units to properties because it dawned on me that a duplex y-, has two units. And we really wanted to be sensitive to the proximity issue. So by changing single-family and duplex units to single-family and duplex properties, uh, we, um, make sure that it's 1/12 of the properties, uh, on a block. And as I, as expressed at prior meetings, the language we have, even without this change, is if there are less than 23 units on a street, you can't have a second STR on that street. Um, this change makes it clear that it's properties rather than units. So a street full of duplexes, um, could have circumvented that. I don't think we have any streets that have multiple, that many duplexes on them, but I don't want to open that door or leave it open. Most significantly, um, I think among the most significant changes that are, uh, shown on this red line are items I and J. Um, item I specifically addresses a concern about proximity, not on the same street, but proximity in terms of distance. Um, the, Mr. and Mrs. Joyce had commented, um, that, um, that it was feasible under our current ordinance for someone to have a second obnoxious short-term rental property, um, on their street, two doors from them, because it's a different street than Wickford Way. So the proposed language in I reads as follows, and I'm reading so that the, the citizens who don't have a copy, um, will know what we're talking about. No short-term rental property shall be within one.
Mark, I want to clarify one thing, that it wasn't just them. It was the community members had also expressed that that was a possibility. So it's, I wasn't just singular to the Joyce's to say that. But we did have public hearings, and as you said earlier, it's a combination of everything that we heard in the first two meetings, because I want to make sure that people understood this is not a one man or one woman shop of what they're trying to get done, but rather that we took the community needs that were heard by everyone and presented to us and reflective in the minutes.
I agree, and I didn't mean to unfairly single them out. I just remember the comments that they made so effectively on this issue.
Help you on that.
Mr. Snell, uh, you were talking a few minutes ago about duplexes. Duplexes, there are a bunch of them over on Jackson Keller.
Right, right. And Jackson Keller is a street with lots of properties on it. So, yes, it could, it could be, um, an issue. And this way, we are at least trying to further control that issue. And no matter what the, the, uh, commission recommends, um, y-, you know, the, the difficulty of, um, trying to prevent continued use by permitted or certified of occupancy properties, um, presents legal issues that are really beyond the scope, excuse me, beyond the scope of this meeting. But let me read the, the proposed new language for, uh, subsections I and J, because they are related, um, to this issue and related to another issue that was raised, um, at prior public hearings and also this evening. I would read, "No short-term rental property shall be within 1,000 feet of any part in any direction of another short-term rental property. Measurement shall be from the property lines of the property, which is the subject of the application, to the property line of other property. An application for a short-term rental property will be denied if granting the certificate of occupancy would violate this provision." Subpart J, again proposed, reads, "A maximum of blank short-term rental certificates of occupancy shall be active within the city at any time. If a short-term rental applicant is, application is received by the city, when the city has blank issued and active short-term rental certificates, the application shall be denied." Again, you know, we heard comments at, at prior public hearings and at this public hearing, um, about, um, capping the number or even shutting down future STR applications or issuance of permits now called certificates of occupancy. Um, this language is designed to give the commission the flexibility to decide how the commission wants to recommend or what the commission wants to recommend to the city council. The, um, uh, the next section includes some more, uh, unit becomes property, permit becomes certificate of occupancy. We have added a requirement that, then, section 520 includes the, uh, what a operator is to post about the property on the location. And we have included, um, a, not only the operator name, but telephone number. We said name and number. Now we say, or would say, name and telephone number. And again, for the local contact person, we've, we've clarified and telephone number and email address. In subpart 8, um, the, the notification to be posted was to include a statement that functions such as weddings, parties, or other gatherings are prohibited, um, unless the short-term rental is located in the G or H districts. Those districts are commercial districts that are not likely to have a, a, e-, activities of those kinds that would be disruptive to general business operations. Um, we have added the word similar, so weddings, parties, or other similar gatherings, um, in order to, uh, and try and broaden the scope of that prohibition. Um, I, I, I showed as a red line the deletion of the "up to three vehicles are permitted on the property during each rental period." And, Mr. Zamron, was that in our, is that in our current ordinance?
So there is no maximum amount of cars parked on a private property, period, international code or local. There is an ordinance that prohibits parking in the street during certain hours.
But we're, we're talking specifically for the STR ordinance. Is there anything in the STR ordinance? General public, we're not talking about, because, you know, when I host my Christmas party, there's got to be at least 15 cars everywhere. So we're talking STRs. So within the STR ordinance today, is that up to three vehicles permitted on the property during a rental, period?
I, I just checked, Mr. Solis. It is not in the current ordinance. Um, it was a thought to include it, um, but.
We address it later.
After, after discussion with staff, the feeling was that the, the next change shown about, um, what they have to comply with, um, adequately address that concern. Um, I, I do think that, um, the, the comments about enforcement resonated clearly with me. But enforcement is not the function of the zoning commission.
Correct.
And, and we do need to, um, I think strengthen this ordinance, um, through some of, some or all of what I have here, and perhaps whatever else the commission wants to do to strengthen the ordinance. Um, and, um, let our code enforcement staff realize that we spent a lot of time, we've heard a lot of people, and we expect enforcement. And, and whatever it takes to get enforcement, it is frustrating to citizens to send an email to code compliance and get back a, a, a reply that said, "Well, I sent them a letter." That's frustrating to citizens. And we don't want that to happen.
And I'll be honest, we see that in all violations, to be honest. We just don't have the manpower, all violations, whether it's grass, whether it's cars, whether it's different things. I mean, you know, it's, it's a product of, of how we fund our staff, uh, to be able to get it dressed. So I, that's not within our purview of zoning. Let's move forward.
Okay. So the maximum occupancy limits, um, were put in originally, um, uh, a- as relating to the Property Maintenance Code of 2021, which is the property maintenance code adopted by the city council in accordance with the local government code. But, um, besides someone who, who happens to have a copy of the International Property Maintenance Code, section year 2021, in his office, which may be Mr. Zamron, nobody else knows what it means or what it says. And I thought it would be better to just put a cap. Again, at prior public hearings, we heard concerns about the number of occupants in a short-term rental property. Um, and, and I recall one specific recommendation that is along the lines of what I have suggested in the new wording, which is that the maximum occupancy limits are two persons per bedroom and a total of not more than 10 total persons, even if there are more than five bedrooms. Um, does it solve every problem? No. But does it at least put some teeth in the number of occupants that can be at the unit?
Mr. Snell, you say two persons per bedroom. Should that be two adult persons per bedroom?
At the will of the commission.
We can amend it if that's what you think, or just two people, period. That kind of goes into the.
What I'm thinking about is you get families with kids.
Well, and that's part of the problem. That's what you're addressing. So either we say 10, or, but that's something for us to consider. So note that, and we'll get back to that as we go through this. I still have a question mark on that, too, because then we have to talk about enforcement.
Okay. Um, moving to page four, um, and we're making really great time. Thank you for not asking us any questions.
Five pages, brother.
You know, you, you're going to have your say shortly.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I, I will stay up here and try and give you what best answers I can, um, limited to, um, what I, what I, you know, think about something. But ultimately, I no longer am a member of this commission. I was for a long time, but I'm not anymore. Um, um, I've added a new, a new section under basically what they have to comply with. Um, I, I will point out at the bottom of page, um, three, um, that they have to have, um, compliance with our hotel occupancy tax ordinance. They have to have swimming pool barrier requirements that the building inspector prescribes pursuant to the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Um, they're notified, they're told that street parking is prohibited as set forth in chapter 44 of our Code of Ordinances. That's the sections that Mr. Zamron commented on before, which prohibit parking during certain overnight hours. Uh, parking on the street is prohibited in the absence of a special permit from the chief of police. Um, and, um, we, um, have, have clarified the, um, to, I've added a clarification that no mobile food vendor is permitted to operate at a short-term rental property. The last thing we need to do is have a party catered by six food trucks. So we wanted to make sure that was clearly prohibited. Um, and then there are two new sections added. Um, again, designed to strengthen, uh, what we have, um, in place. Um, subparagraph D, "A short-term rental certificate of occupancy is valid for one year from the date of issuance. The holder of a short-term rental certificate of occupancy must submit an application for renewal in the format and method promulgated by the city manager or his or her designee. A certificate of occupancy will not be renewed if three violations of city ordinances have been found by the municipal or another court who have occurred on the property during the last 12 months." And sub-E, "Short-term rental certificates of occupancy are not transferable. If the certificate of occupancy holder sells the property, the short-term rental certificate of occupancy automatically expires on the date of recording of the conveyance instrument in the office of the county clerk of Bear County." Um, we don't want an owner of a disruptive short-term rental to, um, try and skate by selling it to somebody else. Um, that's going to, under this language, automatically, um, terminate, um, the certificate of occupancy. Um, uh, the other changes are again, based on changing permit to certificate of occupancy. Um, there is a provision about compliance and penalty. I did not, I only made a, a minor grammatical change to it. But, um, uh, the, a violation of the short-term rental article, of the short-term rental rules in this part of the zoning code is described as a class C misdemeanor offense. And upon conviction, um, and a violator shall be punished by a fine as set forth in section 1.17 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 1.17 of the Code of Ordinances gives the discretion to the municipal judge to issue a fine, um, uh, for a violation of this ordinance, and also states that each day a violation occurs is a separate offense. Um, that is the, um, the, the sum and substance of this red line. It's a little different from the one that the city secretary circulated to you. That's why I wanted to go through it, um, basically, section by section. Um, and, um, I'm certainly going to be here to answer questions. Um, but hopefully, this will help, um, to some extent, guide the discussion. Um, but anything that the co-, commission wishes to talk about related to the short-term rental ordinances is open for that discussion, whether it's Mr. Jackson's comment about the number of occupants or adults and non-adults, and things like that, um, or, um, anything else. Um, and there is a blank in here about, uh, capping the number of short-term rental certificates of occupancy. If the decision of the commission is to move this forward this evening, I would ask that someone, um, make a, a, a motion to fill that blank with something. Um, Mr. Zamron, how many active STR applications?
Hold on a second. So, let's put some order to it. Before we start that, I want to announce the reason I wanted to give you all the minutes. We're going to follow the minutes and go down everything that was brought forth in our public hearings, and then talk about how they were addressed with the recommendations brought, brought forth by our city attorney. So, level set is correct. This is our public, our third public hearing on the STRs. First question I had is, how many S- STRs exist today in the city of Castles, Castle Hills? Louis, that's your question. I was just going to ask the same thing. How many are in the city of Castle Hills?
So my understanding is nine. We're talking about register or have a certificate of occupancy.
Yes, sir. There's nine op-, in, in registered and operational today.
That's my understanding.
And there's anybody, there's no one in the pipeline, or is there a pipeline of applications?
That's why I said my understanding, there was one in the pipeline. I don't know if it was a tie goes to the runner on that one, so the. So the the number could be off by one.
Okay.
So I don't know that answers, sir.
But they have not signed, they did their application, but they haven't. Do they know we're about to make the changes?
They're aware that they're on moratorium.
Okay, and the moratorium may going to be, once it's released, then they go through the process. But by that time, all of the recommendations would have already gone through ourselves and council.
Ostensibly, yes, sir.
Correct, okay. Then I just want to remember, there's two things. One, and I I wanted to make sure that people listening to our our meetings and the recommendations are for the STRs of the future. We do not go retroactive to those that are already, those nine that are already there. So therefore, number 10 potentially would have to follow the recommendations that we sent to city council. And once they put the final stamp and verify numbers, if we do provide numbers for them to then consider. But remember, we do the recommendations that go forward. So I want to start with under new business of the minutes. The first question was hiring a new code compliance officer. That's not within the purview of the zoning commission. The second thing was, you know, the, did we, and Mark, you can come back up to talk about the, did we implement the highest allowable permit and penalty fees with potential? At all? What are the recommendations? How did you come up with the allowable permit and penalty fees?
Permit fees are not set by the zoning commission. It's similar to the.
But your recommendation does it's, I think your answer before was we follow the state code. Right?
Well, we have set the the city council sets fees for various permits.
Okay.
Okay, there are state law. There are state law issues that surround that. The legislature has increased its control and limitation on what cities and counties can do. Even in the last session, lots of changes that relate to fees. But the reason it's not in the short term rental ordinance is because the fee is set by the city council.
That is fine.
It can certainly come through the minutes of this commission that the commission's sense is to.
No, no, no. I I just want, this is the, this is a combination. I'm just, I'm not making a a comment about, I just want to know how we address that. And you're saying it's not the purview of us, it goes to city council.
Correct.
Not a problem. Next question was about notifying neighbors of STR locations. So the only thing we have is availability on our website. Do we have a a section strictly for STRs within our website?
That's changed recently, but the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. So the other question was whether it's a visible sign or plaque identifying STR properties. I don't think we do that, but you're identifying the actual property on the website will tell where people are. Correct?
Chairman, so at least going back to notification of neighbors concerning STR locations, should we have something that would perhaps notify neighbors of STR applications?
That goes with the zoning commission. You're exactly right, because once, once it comes into the thing, I mean, well, it's going to come here. But once they go through the application process, we'll ask if they're somewhere within that as we go through these. Good point. Mark, is there a process that today, if an STR uh, application, like for instance, the one that's pending? Is the public made aware of that application?
No, there's no mechanism to to advise the public of an application that's pending or an application has been approved or denied.
And the public does not have a place to oppose it other than what we have in the writings.
That's correct, sir. And let me amend my last comment. The public does have a way to determine if if an STR was approved on the website, because it's showing as an STR. But as far as declined or an application in process, there is no mechanism for that.
Which is similar to what we did with the permanent makeup. No one comes forward and say, oh, I I oppose that. It's, it's, I got you. So there is not a mechanism for that. All right, so let's move forward. Capping occupancy attended 12 individuals. Obviously, we talked about 10, so it's there. Prohibiting the use of gar- of garages and non public uh, bedroom areas as sleeping quarters. I don't think that's valid anymore, because again, we're going by bedrooms. So that's it. Restricting the addition of sports courts and extra parking, that's being addressed. Limiting STR related vehicles to a minimum of three, that's open for discussion. Right, we'll, if there's a there, but that was eliminated as something with this ordinance. Allowing three or more complaints regardless of citation to renew a permit, it's being addressed. Required STRs to pass all currently mandated inspections, that was addressed. We require an owner representative to be on site within 30 minutes. I believe we gave him 60 minutes, correct, Mark? Is it 60 or 30?
Sixty.
Sixty, correct?
It was 60, and I am not recommending a change to that. I just.
Okay, no, no, that's fine.
It's it it it's difficult to
Expect 30.
In the community of this size to 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 require that. It is discretionary with the the commission. You know, my sense was the 60 minute notification, 60 minute to be on site was reasonable. I think a court might look at this and say 30 minutes, you know, on 1604 or 410.
I got you.
Is maybe not reasonable.
Did we address the the maximum legal fine? And when you, again, that's not within the purview of the zoning commission, that goes to city council. Okay, so now we look at, we talked about the bedrooms. You can see the generally set two individuals per bedroom. We ended up doing that, that's being recommended. The denied removal, we talked about that, how it's working for us now and how we have a system in place to be able to do that. The cross, yeah, okay, so then we addressed the bedrooms also. There was also a question about the fee, the permits. That's not within the purview of us, that goes to city council. The Norse complaints that also was outlined by Mr. Schnell that it's a lot out of our purview goes the other way. And you have a whole section addressing that. We talked about the clustering, we talked about the 1,000 now radius. So that's addressed already. Uh, we talked about the noise ordinance. Once again, not within the purview of the zoning commission. We kick it to the city council to be able to work with the law enforcement and those at the that have to address that. We talked about a citywide cap that is open for discussion, because we haven't gotten to that part. And then we talked about limiting perhaps to just three and to ban them completely or just three altogether per year to be approved. That's something we can discuss. The question about making them competitive, I, how would you define that? That was kind of something you had talked about that. I think we address it with the different requirements now of of the expectations. I did have a question that that kind of stung out to me, because I want to make sure that people understand, right? Property owners have a right to sell their property. They have a right to be able to say, hey, I'm moving out, I'm I want to be able to sell it. We can't mandate to whom they sell. We never get into that, right? That's, that's a total violation in my estimation. Oh, and one last thing, we we included the sports courts, the pools and everything else. So that's in there now with the new ordinance that's being presented to us. But I want to make sure, I'm going to go back, that we have two audiences that I look at, right? The sellers and then the buyers. The sellers have a right to be able to say, you know what, I've paid my dues. Mom's leaving, mom died, we're going to sell the house. They can't tell who's going to be selling to the house. And we don't want to get involved with that. And the realtors on this board would agree probably with that. I guess my question was, when we think of terms in in of somebody saying, you know what? Some corporation reached out to me, said they want to buy it. Is there a possibility? And how do we tell the corporation before the purchase of how stringent we are in our expectations, right? Because then, like, for instance, the the one that we have right there, 113, right? They're all sudden later, like, oh, there's an ordinance. Yes, there is. Uh, I guess in my way, the buyer be well, buyer should know its history. Our realtors that are selling in Castle Hills would love to see them have this ordinance in their hands. So they're making a concerted effort to make people aware of the expectations of the city of Castle Hills before a purchase. Did you have to say something on that? Okay. Yeah, it's the buyer. I agree completely, it's the buyer's responsibility to understand. All right, so now let's go over the recommendations that you saw there. Let's go with page one. Is there any comments or changes you'd like to see in page one? Which now says that we define a short term rental or we also included, right? Of the property on the dwelling which is located, including without limitation, a swimming pool, tennis court, sport court, pickleball court, backyard or gazebo. That's an expansion for what we're able to get done. So anybody has a question on that? Yes, sir. Or clarification?
I was thinking that maybe they could amend and add a time limit, like, you know, that they can start, they have to stop playing basketball or pickleball by a certain time, like 10 a.m., I mean, 10 p.m.
Well, well, okay, so we'll look at a time limit in terms of outdoor activities. Look, that's not going to be in that area. It could be somewhere where we'll talk to Mark to be able to look at. Thank you. But otherwise, this stays, because remember, this is all just the definition, not the execution.
Okay.
Anything else? You saw the change that we made instead of a permit certificate of occupancy. Page two. In page two, the same thing is most of clarification in terms of verbiage. I think it's also important for us to understand, again, they went away from permit to certificate of occupancy to make sure that people understand it. Those are really pretty much state of the action of everything that's been taking place before with the definitions just being that. Let's go to page three, the big one. So on page three, we add a whole new sentence, right? And I no short term rental property shall be within 1,000 feet of any part in any direction of in another short term rental property. Measurement shall be for the property lines of the property, which is subject to the application of the property line of the other property. An application for a short term rental property will be denied if granting the certificate of occupancy would violate this provision. Everybody okay with that? Perfect, it outlines what we heard. Here's the one, a ma- a maximum of X. Short term rental certificates of occupancy shall be active within the city of San Antonio. I mean, excuse me, Castle Hills, that's my other old hat. Anyway, um, within that, we know today we have nine. We have one in the pocket applying for the first time would have to adhere that. What is y'all's desire to have, whether there should be a maximum or a minimum? Thoughts? I, and I'm, here's what I'm thinking.
Ten or 12.
Well, I.
Doesn't make any difference to me.
We, huh?
I have a thought.
Okay, I mean, I, so the the amount of, so then the maximum is nine. We have one in the pocket, which means that application, so maybe it should be 10 for that consideration.
Are we, are we going to allow the public to speak? One of the Zoom members raising her hand, wanting to.
Thank you, I I don't have my camera on here, and we're not watching that. So you need to keep us informed of that, guys. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
We need to unmute her. There, there you go.
Oh, okay. So I guess for me, max nine or whatever, I from.
Jackson, hold on, we need your name and address, please.
Sarah Sekel, and I'm the Texas, I'm a Texas real estate broker, and I'm also the agent who had sold 113 Wickford as the buyer's agent for my clients.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
But I, from a, you know, I've I've sold many short term rentals. I'm also an invest, a short term, I own them myself. But in terms of maximum, I would say from a city council perspective, you know, you know, how has it impacted Castle Hills, the economy? So like, when these visitors come, you know, are they eating at the local shops? Are they giving the businesses in Castle Hills more business because they're local? You know, the tax revenue, how much has the city actually from those nine collected from the hotel occupancy tax? Has it been enough for y'all to be able to, you know, keep up your streets, your parks, things like that? So I, for me, I I think maybe, you know, looking at more of how it's, how currently those nine are benefiting the city? And then saying, okay, if we find no benefit, then maybe putting that max, because you're basically saying, hey, we don't want any more. This is not benefiting our city at all. We don't see the money from it, it's not benefiting our local shops. That would just be my perspective on before saying, hey, we want to put a max you know, a max on it.
Thank you. Um, and and so I want to make sure. Louis, how many households are in Castle Hills?
I don't know the number of single family residents, sir, I really don't.
Jack?
Just about two thousand.
So we have nine. Sample size is too small for us to say it's impactful. Too small to say nine houses making a big economic impact to a city where there's 2,000 single family, and then there's still multifamily.
So sales tax reports are confidential, quote unquote. So there's probably no quantum way to quantify their impact.
But I understand the argument, but I just wanted to say, yeah, wait, I mean, I want the commission to understand.
And
Nothing.
Her other point of hotel occupancy tax funds, those don't go to streets, police, fire. Those are dedicated tax revenue that can only be spent on certain things, and they're tourism related more than anything. And the city of Castle Hills from, I've I've only been here two months, but my understanding, there's been minimal expenditures of hot funds, because there really aren't very many tourism activities, so.
So like, we're not building perfect Project Marvel? Oh, that's not us, right? That's another story. Yes, sir, you had a comment?
I was only going to say what Mr. Duque already said about hotel occupancy tax.
Perfect. All right, so then let's continue. Oh, no. The question is, so we're going to put a max. So I suggest 10, only because we have one in the hopper. Uh, and it would be, you know, and that's it, right? So and again, this is a recommendation to the council. They can say that's it. I mean, if they concur, they're basically saying that's the end of the story, no more new ones. Because only 10 will be operating within the city of Castle Hills. Is that the way y'all read it? Everybody's cool with that? Okay. Then the other question is, if the short term rental application is received by the city, when the city has 10 issued an active short term rental, the application shall be denied. That's what the commission understands? All right, let's move on. So then, let's go with short term rental requirements, right? Again, what you see in the red are some of the occupancy, but it also adds some, the phone number, it also adds an email email address. And I think the biggest one that I thought was interesting is eight. Notification that all functions such as wedding parties and other similar gatherings are prohibited at at the short term rental. Again, I want to make sure to people listening, this is not about your regular houses. These are the short term rentals only. So please don't misconstrue that we're talking about your ability to have somebody's wedding at your house today. It's with the designation of short term rentals. I want to make sure that's perfectly clear. The next one of significance. We were eliminated up to three vehicles permitted on the property during each rental period.
Mr. Chairman, if we can go back to to eight, I think when the three of us had a review of this ordinance, we we went, we we spoke about this section specifically because of the lack of a definition of parties. And the example we gave was some moms rent an STR for cheerleading camp here in San Antonio. The young ladies meet some other young ladies, and they decide, hey, well, we've got a pool at the STR. Why don't you all come over Saturday, you know, before we all go home tomorrow? Is that a party? Is that a gathering that's going to lend itself to the cops kicking?
Yeah, you know, I mean.
Out on the street without a definition of, is that a party or a gathering?
I don't think we could ever get to that. It's, there's going to have to remain gray, to be honest. I don't think how we'll ever be able to be.
I I think as a city manager and as, I won't speak for the city attorney, but gray in ordinances is
It's.
Where we run into problems.
So we will be able to, sorry, I missed, time's up. So that could be addressed at your city council meeting. So we will, we can move it forward to that way, or we can define it. I I prefer leaving it to city council to figure that one out.
I have a question. I, it might be similar to what he's saying, but I had a question mark under the word similar. Like, who determines that?
That was going to be my question, right?
City council.
It'll be city council. She just basically said that the word similar, right?
I have a question mark by the word similar, because I was wondering who would define similar. And it seemed, it did seem like gray area.
Well, I added the word similar after a discussion because I felt that gathering without the qualification was too broad. I understand that weddings and parties and gatherings may not be the clearest words. I think there is a definition in Webster's Dictionary. Um, I think there is a definition in Webster's dictionary of weddings. I think there's a definition of party or parties. I think there may even be a definition of gathering, so when a word is not defined in a statute, you look at the ordinary dictionary definition to see what it is. I just, I, I do not disagree, but rather agree with Mr. Duque, this is a gray area. Um, and, and this whole section is somewhat questionable. Um, I think the suggestion that we heard, um, a little bit out of order, um, limiting use of the S T R to the people who are guests at the S T R may be a way to address this, and it is something that, um, uh, the commission could recommend a change to paragraph eight to simply, um, change this entire wording um, to, to provide, um, that, um, uh, occupancy of the S T R is limited to guests registered at the S T R. Um, that is a way to do it, and maybe, maybe retain the exa- the exception
Well, we don't.
Or in the G eight district.
We don't register the guests, we, we. You wrote this for us, so you tell me.
I know, but we have a ten. We have a ten-person limit, okay?
That's it.
And maybe that is another way to look at this, but I, I don't want to, I want the commission to at least know that maybe there is a way to, um, uh, otherwise try to prevent the kinds of loud gatherings that were the source of many of the complaints.
We do have the ten-person limit, so we should just reference that.
Okay.
Because that's it. I mean, so note. Yes, sir. I need you on the mic, please.
There's a ten-person limit, including those folks that come by before you go to supper.
What was the recommendation?
If you have seven or eight people that are staying in the house, and they have three or four friends over, you know, to visit before they go eat dinner, are you in violation?
Mark, is that addressed anywhere here? I would think so.
The way guest is defined, and this is basically the, the material part of this definition is in the original ordinance. Guest is defined as the overnight occupants renting a short-term rental unit, now it says short-term rental property, but the overnight occupants renting a short-term rental for a specified period and the daytime visitors of the overnight occupants. So an argument could be made that the, uh, limit of ten is a limit of the overnight occupants.
Only.
Right, and so, um, we may want to look at that definition to try and back our, back into, um, some different kind of protection for the neighborhood.
Well, I suggest, um, I, you know what, I, I want to make sure we move through this today, I want to move it to city council. So you'll have pending work with the city council, uh, in reference to that definition.
And, and going down that same thought process, you know, we, we're talking about catering, we're talking about food service in here. Um, well, now they're not ca- catering for a gathering or a party, but nonetheless, if they're catering, are the caterers part of the ten?
Yeah.
They're gonna be there for a few hours, I mean, I've never had catering that was, you know, it's not DoorDash.
True.
Well, the thing that I was concerned about is you have a family that's come in and is using the.
Then the relatives from San Antonio go visit.
And then they have, have a couple of other folks from around town that have got kids, and pretty soon you end up with fifteen people over there, real fast.
So I think that may be something that we need to give back to the city attorney to bring forth when they go to city council for a better definition of that area that Mr. Jackson just identified, uh, as well as the mark of time about outdoor recreation, because it's not addressed here at all. So let's continue moving forward. Um, the biggest thing here is two persons per bedroom, a total of not more than ten persons, even if they are more than five bedrooms. That we agree with, we've got a problem with that, let's move on, on the next.
Go back to number three there, and, uh, I would suggest that it'd be two adult persons per bedroom. Because you run into a situation with kids, the little ones particularly, you can end up with three of them in a bedroom.
The intent was to limit the number of people, period. So if you, I mean, it's a tough way to define it when you say there's no limitation on children. Because that's what you're saying, so they can have fifteen kids and five adults. It opened up that door. So right here, we're saying two people. And remember, this is, this is what we're telling the renter, I mean, excuse me, yeah, the S T R owner to relay to them, going to back of buyer beware, you can only bring ten people. And so, yes, what it does, I mean, we can't answer for everything, but what it does say, as an example, let's say it's, you're, you put out your S T R for, on the website, right? Hey, but you're giving out qualifications as to what the limitations are, then people make a choice accordingly. And if you're saying ten people, period, then they realize they can't have three family members and have, you know, fifteen kids, or they can't have that volleyball team that they're looking at, because that's ten people just on the volleyball team, and then the parents and the shepherds. So it's not going to be viable for them.
Well, I, I just want to be clear in terms of the city staff enforcement of this.
Yeah.
This is going to be almost impossible to enforce. I mean, yes, I get it, you're going to put it on paper, but what method is, what, what, how is the police officer, because it's going to be after hours when code enforcement has gone home for the day, how is the police department going to enforce this and, and?
So when you reviewed this, when you reviewed this before?
We talked about these things, yes.
So why is it still here?
Because it was, I think it was asked to be here.
But my question is, you're, I mean, I apologize for two months in, but you just answered the question that would have been the billion-dollar question, how can we even enforce it? I would have expected you all staff to be able to give us a, something for us to consider that was enforceable. If it's not, then why is it even there?
I'm not talking about changing the ten persons total.
No, but I'm saying, but it still comes up to his issue, how do you enforce it if it's just ten?
I understand that, but when you start talking about, uh, well, I'm thinking about my family, down here earlier this year. You, my son and his wife and three kids, okay, three-bedroom house, that works out well. Well, I've got another son here in town that's got a couple of kids, and they come over to spend the night. Bingo, you have, you, your, your two people per room goes, goes out the window, right?
Mark, can you say something?
To address Mr. uh, Jackson's comment, um, one thought would be for this phrase to say two adults per bedroom and a total of not more than ten occupants, ten total occupants. That would address the concern he just raised about his grandchildren. Um, and on the enforcement issue, the reality is that enforcement comes about when there is a violation alleged or a call into the P D, as you suggest, it's, it's more likely than not, unless it's a garbage thing. Most of the complaints are about outdoor noise-related activity and parking. So if the police get a report about excessive noise, the police have, I would argue, Mr. Zamaron can tell me if he disagrees, but if you get a complaint about noise, you have probable cause to go onto the property and listen. And if you have probable cause to go on the property to listen, and the noise is coming from inside, you have probable cause to go inside, and just what you can, guess what you can do when you're inside? You can do a head count. Now, that may be a, a little bit of a stretch, um, but we're talking about setting the community's expectations. And I think that there is enough ground to allow for a number of, an occupancy limit. Um, I think we've seen that in other ordinances in other cities. Um, and I do think it's one way to get control of this, similar to some of the previous discussions um, about, uh, looking between now and if this advances tonight, um, uh, looking at tightening up a few things, um, to present as alternatives um, to, this, for the city council to consider at its meeting when it will, um, be looking over all of our shoulders um, and at this, um, proposed changed ordinance. Um, and among those things will be, I think, the definition of guest, um, whether or not we can, um, limit certain activities to daylight hours. Um, and, and this whole question about, uh, the number of people um, that are, that are permitted to be at, at a short-term rental property um, in Castle Hills. Uh, but I do think the direct, uh, way to address Mr. Jackson's concern is simply to change two persons to two adults, um, without changing the total number of, of occupants.
Okay, make that amendment.
See whether the commission is agreeing.
Save it, because we'll, at the end, we're going to adopt it as an amendment.
I do have a question. Um, currently for the occupants, I do know that these S T Rs, they, they market their properties, and so that, I don't know if there's a way to include in the occupancy that they cannot market the property for more than whatever is allowed. So like one of Southern Wickford Way, it's advertised as sixteen can occupy the property. Well, that's a violation right there, um, so I don't know if we can include how we can request that it's not marketed as a more, over the occupancy amount.
I think the best way is the enforcement part, right? They'll get the message that way, we can't mandate, I mean, that's what I want to be able to get to the point is, I, and I talked about the, 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 this is that buyer beware kind of thing, but on the rental part, right? They need to know the ordinance, now whether the company that's renting says, hey, well, that, once this is passed, they'll be getting the new information, but remember, their grandfather did. So this is not applicable to the present nine, it's the future, yeah, so.
I, I, Mr. Snoll, you have, you start talking about sixteen, now we're talking about a ten limit.
Right.
But you're talking about a property that was, uh, uh, certified as a S T R.
Correct.
Prior to the change is.
That we're proposing.
The one that's, the older one's grandfather, didn't it?
Correct.
We're going to look at whether or not everything is grandfathered, or just the use as an S T R is grandfathered. Um, and whether newly imposed regulations would apply um, as long as they don't prohibit the use as an S T R. It is on my list of, of now four items to look at, because I would like, um, to look at the question um, that was just, uh, asked about, you know, can the city limit, essentially, can the city limit how a property is marketed? Um, I, I do have some concerns about, you know, that going too far, but I think it's worth at least seeing whether there are other cities that, uh, do something like that, or have done something like that, and have so far, um, avoided, um, court intervention.
Okay, page four, no mobile phone, uh, food vendors, we are fine with that. Then this is the, the new stuff, D, a short-term rental certificate of occupancy is valid for one year from the date of issuance. The holder of the short-term rental certificate of occupancy must submit an application for renewal in the format and the method propagated by the city manager, he's or her designate. A certificate of occupancy will not be renewed if three violations of city ordinances have been found by the municipal or another court, or to have occurred on the property during the last twelve months. We're fine with that, right? Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to, um, determine how far in advance they need to apply for their renewal? How, how far in advance they need to submit their?
What is the process now for the, for the renewal?
There is a late fee, and so.
No, but let me ask you this, so my, let's say my renewal is January the thirtieth. Do they apply thirty days before, they, fifteen days before, it, or is it just open?
It's open, but it can't be late, or it incurs a, a penalty.
So it's open, so it's open.
So if it expires on January thirtieth, and they submit on January thirtieth, they're not in violation.
Correct.
Because they submitted before it expired.
Correct.
What is the length of time before, from submitting to whether it's accepted or not? And will they be?
In operation, I got you.
Um, might be getting too deep, but will they be penalized because they wouldn't officially be um, legal to op, to operate in that timeframe?
So I understand where you're coming from, and the, the best practices for the other things that we have with acceptance of applications, including all the boards and committees of applications that I take, is the day the application is received is the day that the error is being corrected. For instance, a B O A violation, in this case, the preventing the, the, uh, expiration of, of the C of O. If it happens on the thirtieth, and they're expiring on the thirtieth, and the years that thinking is that they're trying to prevent being, uh, expired. So whether it takes two days for the city, um, building inspector to do a live safety, um, um, inspection is rather irrelevant, because they brought their application in for renewal under their best, in, under their best practices at date of expiration.
I, is it wrong, Mark, if we were able to do, because I, I, I understand your question, and I see it differently. My thing is, because now we may have the violations, we should, it, Mark, if we are able to add verbiage that would say that we expect them to apply for the renewal sixty days before the renewal, so that we go through the checks and balances of making sure with the municipal court, are they in violation? Because that, that's going to buy them a month, I mean, because this, how long does it take for you to process an application?
Uh, about two to three days.
You want, you want to stick to that, two or three days, or you want to give yourself a little cushion?
Well, that's, that's, that's up to, that's up to, any, any cushion that you give my permits clerk would be appreciated by her.
I'm thinking at least thirty days before, or sixty days. So you start your process, because that'll allow us to look at the court and go off of this orders, right? So then it's reviewed, was there any violations and everything else, and then they can start exactly on the day of renewal. So, Mark, can we add sixty days? Other one, what do you think? Thirty days, thirty days, okay, guys?
Thirty days.
Thirty days before that they start the process for renewal. Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, is there a reason that it has to be a year? Do other cities have other cities done something that's shorter? Um, because it seems like it's kind of difficult to revoke their permit. But I don't know the answer to that question, if other cities have had something where.
I think it's the norm for us to do a year on almost everything, isn't it?
Considering the new language that you're looking for violations that have been presented to the court, and, and this is a distinction, not violations to co-compliance, but to the court, within, within three, within a year, I think a year is, is lucid.
Yeah. E, short-term rental certificates of occupancy are not transferable. If the certificate of occupancy holder sells the property, the new, the short-term rental certificate of occupancy automatically expires on the date and recording of the conveyance instrument in the office of the county clerk of the Bear County. So, you know, the whole issue about buyer and seller, who's going to watch that? How would we know? Mark? I understand the intent. We got people down in Bear County looking at this?
We will know when a renewal application is filed.
Okay.
Because it'll be filed under a different owner name. Okay, um, and we could require, as part of the renewal process, the renewing applicant to provide a copy of its or his or her deed.
Okay, let's do that.
So, so it's, it's something that, that gets caught on renewal, um, if it's not voluntarily addressed beforehand.
I like that, yeah, that's good.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that you get, uh, new owner to get utilities, you got to have C of O from the city. Is that still the case? Was fifty years ago.
No, sir. No, sir, they, and even I came on board a lot.
Louis saying no.
Talking about a C of O inspection for residential, and that there's.
We've never done that.
No, we've never done that.
Yeah, so note this, um, good try, fifty years ago.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, do we, is there a suggestion that we add to this sub? to this subpart D? That a application for renewal must be filed at least 30 days prior to expiration?
That'll be the amendment, yes, sir. Along with our two adults. So we have two.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that we were talking about in, not why we're getting feed. So with the.
Nope, you gotta get it on.
With the nine uh, existing, what are going to be grandfathered permits? They all have different renewal dates. How are we going to roll those in to this new ordinance when they come up for renewal? Are they going to have one year? Plus whatever time it is renewing? I mean, if this ordinance is ineffective till September, whatever. And one renews, say, August 31st. Do they have until August 31st of 2026? Before they lose their grandfathered status?
Well, again, it's I it is subject to review as to what exactly the grandfather status would be.
Correct.
Um, it may be entirely grandfathered, which would be contrary to the intent of this commission. And and I would dare say the intent of the city council, which I think shares this this commission's view that we need to do something. Um, other cities have done something like this. So I'm hopeful I'll be able to find a roadmap in a a roadway in which we can enforce these provisions. But it would be one year from the date of the original application or from the last renewal. Each one would keep their own anniversary date, yes, ma'am.
Correct, because we never know. And then the the question for us, well, not for us, for the city council, as you're going to seek a pathway, is whether you allow them to renew once or twice. Or because we also have people and it's been mentioned that are our own neighbors that have SDRs. So basically, we're also saying that in the future that SDR will be gone. Unless they adhere to everything that we have here. And so that would be the other question, right? But there again, it's their prerogative um, to be able to stay as an SDR. Then here are the new rules. Now, I would think, just throwing it out there before we do it, that I would like to see at least two renewals to live to allow them to properly plan for what needs to change or doesn't change within the new ordinance. I I just don't see us being rude to our neighbors that have one. Um, because we don't know the percentage of people that are local of the nine. I think it's three or four. Louis?
I was writing a note to the city manager.
How many of the nine are locally owned?
Uh, I don't know that answer, but I can tell you that for sure, there's three of them that are a corporation.
What I thought, three or four. Okay, almost half. Okay, but anyway, I I'm just telling you guys, I would think to be fair to them who invested to create this as another revenue source, that we allow them to at least renew once or twice.
And Mr. Solis, it is typical in certain situations uh, to allow a period of time before a new ordinance becomes effective. And it's important to consider doing that, but again, it's it's not part of the ordinance that the zoning commission is working on. But it is typical to allow a period of time for a a holder of an existing permit to recover its costs um, incurred in the process of that permit um, to before the the rules change. That's typical on fines um, in in, I think it's chapter 214 of the Local Government Code. Um, I can't remember the exact phraseology there. Um, so but that is something that the council would have the discretion to do. Um, either at the time it adopts new wording or subsequent to that.
Okay.
Um, I I I will put it on my list.
Thank you, sir.
Really, one of the things on my list is is the, see what I wrote down here on the other side of this piece of paper? It was, will rules apply to existing properties?
Right.
And so we want to make sure that will will the new rules apply to the existing properties? Uh, when and to what extent? And and probably provide for some transitional period.
Yeah, because it definitely is putting up a Miss Gray.
Probably already booked themselves out six months.
Yeah, so no, no, you you've got to allow them at least two years of renewals. I think Miss Gray brought it up properly in terms of their marketing. Uh, and and so it's going to change who they can have now. It definitely is going to change if they go down to a limitation of 10. And be now they're going 16 or whatever. Obviously, that's an economic impact to them. And so we need to be respectful of that because they're already there.
Mr. Snoll.
Mister Chairman. Yes, sir.
Had a had a question for you.
You have a question?
Hold on. Okay, thanks.
The ones that have permits now, and we go to changing the statute. Are they grandfathered forever or are they just grandfathered for one renewal or just?
That's what we're discussing.
We're going to be looking into exactly how we can enforce the new rules against existing properties. Um, perhaps over as Mr. Solis suggests, one or two renewals or some other period. But we we need to continue to deliver a message about enforcement of what's in place now in order to try to provide relief for the property owners and the citizens who have been adversely affected by what's been happening at certain of these properties. So I don't want to, you know, give anyone a a a sense that well, we're just not going to do anything else for two years because we can't do everything. We need to enforce the current rules under the nuisance um, uh, causing property and and under the other prohibitions that are in place. And we don't make any progress at all if violations aren't addressed and citations aren't issued.
I and I understand somebody went to speak, but unfortunately, we are now just in our speaking in our questions. Public hearing was earlier. Please save your questions for the city council meeting where you can ask those questions that you may have. This is just our discussion. We closed the public hearing. We don't listen to pu to outside voices anymore. Uh, that time has already expired. So I apologize for not allowing you to speak, whoever is on the internet. Um, it same applies to people here in the audience. So let's move on. Um, we had the other change about the city code that's done and read on page four. I'm still on page four. Uh, and then we go to page five and it's the finish line. So we had, Mark, you want to come forward and let's go over all the amendments? So we can accept the amendments with recommendation to go to city council.
I'm going to accept the amendments.
Thank you, sir.
And take it to city council.
We have a second, Jackson will be here, so Mark, you want to outline the recommendations? And Mark is being protective because he's going on vacation. He doesn't need to get sick or pick up anything he's going to be going on. Thank you, sir. This is the actual resolution. Do you need me to read this first or you go first?
No, I think I think you have a a motion for Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
And a second from Ms. Ben Gojia.
Yep.
Uh, let me G O E. Um, to um, to incorporate into the red line the following three changes. Um, uh, in in section 50 dash 19. Um, subsection uh, J on page three, inserting the number 10 in two places. In 50 dash 521, subpart uh, 520, not 521, section 5 50 dash 520, section B, part three, changing of two persons per bedroom to two adults per bedroom. And in section 50 dash 520, subpart D, adding as a new second sentence, an application for renewal must be filed at least 30 days prior to expiration. That is what is the subject of the Jackson motion.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, yes, sir.
We would ask that uh, section 50 dash 524.
Cover the city manager, all right?
Either we add uh, language that act that provides an appeal mechanism? Or we just delete the word appeal from that section subsection header?
And, Mr. Jackson, will you accept and add to your motion that we change the caption of 50 dash 524 on page five to just read certificate of occupancy suspension or revocation?
That's fine.
Yes, sir, it's accepted.
So now we have the four substantive changes um, to be added as additional red line revisions uh, to the uh, proposed um, amendment document.
Correct.
Okay, and then what I passed out to the members of the commission is resolution 2025 dash 08 dash 05A. A resolution of the zoning commission recommending to the city council of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, that the provisions in section 50 dash 516 through 50 dash 524 concerning short term rentals be revised. And um, what we will attach, assuming that Mr. Jackson's motion is adopted, um, what will be attached is exhibit A to this resolution and pass on to the city council if this resolution is adopted would be a updated red line that incorporates the four items I've specified. Um, uh, thank you to Mr. Duque for catching that extra word. Um, so, Mister Chairman, the appropriate now would be to have discussion on the motion by Mr. Jackson, seconded by Ms. Benjo Gojia in regard to the adding these four modifications to the red line.
We have a motion and a second. I do want to make sure that we all understand. This is a cumul- accumulation of three public hearings. We listened to the community, we provided that this resolution reflects our best analysis and recommendations that we're going to give to the city council. Understanding that, are there any objections? Objections, objections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we have a resolution, they'll be going to city council for the next meeting.
No, sir, that was a that was a vote on the amendments.
Now I'll read the resolution.
We need the resolution.
That is correct.
To make a motion to adopt resolution 2025 dash 08 dash 05 dash A. And yes, I think it would be, since this is a an issue of importance, to have the record reflect that the actual resolution was read into the record.
Correct. And then, so you want me to read it all? It's already done.
I think I think the 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 procedural step would be for um, uh, the chair to read the the motion as as it is set out in these um, five paragraphs. Um, you don't have to say the past and adopted, but the three, the four whereas paragraphs and the one now therefore paragraph.
I got it.
Let's read it into the record. I will give a copy.
This is a resolution.
I will give a copy to Ms. Davis and I have one.
Got it. Resolution 20 2025 08 dash 05A, a resolution of the zoning commission recommending to the city council of the city of Castle Hills that the provision sections 50 dash 516 through 50 dash 524 concerning short term rentals be revised. Whereas on April 8th, the city council directed the zoning commission to conduct public hearings and to recommend updates to the zoning code provisions regarding short term rentals. And whereas the zoning commission conducted public hearings on short term rentals on May 6, 2025, June 3, 2025, and August the 5th, 5, 2025. And whereas the zoning commission heard citizen comments on the problems associated with short term rentals and citizens suggested changes to the city zoning ordinance provision as to short term rentals to reduce the negative impact of such uses in residential areas. And whereas the zoning commission has evaluated the comments, received it in its three public hearings and has discussed various issues related to the impact of short term rental properties of on our nearby residents and finds that it's appropriate to recommend changes to short term rental provisions in the zoning ordinance. Now, therefore being resolved by the zoning commission of the city of Castle Hills that it recommends the city council amend sections 50 dash 516 through 50 dash 524 of the zoning commission in accordance with exhibit A attached hereto. Passed and adopted the fifth day of August, 2025. And I'll just get one more vote. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Could we get a motion for?
Oh, Jackson motion this one.
Motion.
Jackson's going to do this one too?
A second?
The same two.
Mojica.
Oh, Mojica said second. All right, so all those in favor say aye?
All right.
Those opposed? Done. Motion carries. Thank you all. We all do good work, guys. Motion to adjourn, Jackson? Oh, we give it to Miss Gray. There you go. So everybody's included. We have a motion to adjourn with a second. All those in favor say aye? Motion carries. Thank you all. Welcome, Mr. City Manager.
Time.
That's it, Jackson. And Gray.
Mister Chairman.
It's great.
Time.
I've been hearing. It is eight. I can't even see it. Eight 16, okay, eight 16. Good job, brother.